Hello and welcome everyone to today's virtual town hall on the pandemic. What now? During our time together, you will hear from experts about the latest on the pandemic. Our presenters are Dr. Chantel A. Bear McGee, Regional Medical Director for the New Orleans area, and Dr. Rochelle Head Dunham, Executive and Medical Director for the Metropolitan Human Services District. We first turn to Dr. McGee. Thank you for being with us today. Could you tell us where we are and where you think we're headed?
Sure, I'll be happy to. Thank you for giving me this platform to speak today. So, where are we? How did we get here? What comes next? And hopefully recess. So I'd like to address what would take to return to normalcy. And I chose this reference recess because I think we all can relate and recall our school days and that midday reprieve from coursework, new assignments, new material, new directives. And for the past year as a country, as a state, we've been gripped by fear and been inundated with new information, new requirements, new directives. And I think everyone is looking forward to a break. Now, in order for us to get that break, we have to do our assignment, right? And I can't do your assignment, you can't do mine. And what is that assignment? That assignment is to determine what is best for you. I know last week, most of us experienced a myriad of emotions regarding the J and J cause. So whether that was frustration, concern, fear, disappointment, even a sense of peace. I think that it's important right now more than ever for us to be able to digest the information that is available to us in order to make the best decisions in order to return to normalcy. So what is the assignment? Well, the first thing you have to do is put your name on the assignment, put your name on the paper, recognize this message pertains to you. Then do the classwork. Let's examine all the information we have been presented with and determine what will it take for us to return to normal. Eventually, you have to put your pencil down and make a decision for yourself. In doing so, I hope that you wash your hands and free yourself of all the misconceptions and misinformation that has been circulating. And hopefully, we'll be able to resume our activities and return to what will become our new normal. Now, I think it's important to define the difference between intent versus behavior. We know that our government, whether we're talking about the previous Trump administration or the current Biden administration, wants for all Americans to get vaccinated. However, that hasn't necessarily translated to our behavior. A third of Americans, adults, they feel skeptical about the COVID vaccine, but not only the vaccines, also the intention of the government and of our healthcare system. And this is across the spectrum. So whether we're talking about disabled, homeless, individuals that live in rural or urban population, black, white, Hispanic, liberals and conservatives, everyone questions, why is the government and the healthcare system now all of a sudden so invested in me? Well, thus far in Louisiana, we recognize that over a million people have been vaccinated. But it's not the number that's ideal, right? In order for us to reach herd immunity, we have to have more than 25% of the population vaccinated. And so this is not the first time that our government and healthcare system has been invested in us. So let me give you a narrative. In the mid 1800s, there was a condition called plegra. It was largely relegated to African Americans in the South. So they would develop these rashes and plaques all over their body and in time, dementia and delirium and hallucinations. And so people felt that this affliction only affected this particular demographic, that there was something inherent about it similar to sickle cell. But by the late 1800s, it was noticed in poor whites and in immigrants. And so a directive came from the government, from the healthcare system, saying that this is a contagion. In order to stay healthy, stay away from migrants, immigrants, indigent, poor, and Negro people. And that sort of has been at the back of our mind for many years, for over 150 years. So when we think of conditions and public health issues such as gun violence, substance use disorder, HIV, we have largely thought of them being relegated to certain sectors of the population, not realizing that we're all part of the same community. So in the case of plegra, right? So what happened is that the Great Depression occurred and good upstanding Americans, individuals who were middle class and wealthy, now started developing these rashes and plaques all over their body. In addition, it became an issue of national security. How can you give young men guns if they're having delusions and hallucinations? So then they realized that it had mass effect. And the same thing has happened with COVID-19. Initially, we said, hey, this disease is primarily, you know, a disease that's in China, on the Asian continent, individuals that travel. We never thought that it would reach American shores, but it has. So when plegra became a pandemic, it became this epidemic in the US having mass effect. The government realized they had to do something. They did research and it realized it was caused by a vitamin deficiency. And not certain people were predisposed to getting this particular condition that anybody could be affected, particularly during the Great Depression. And so what they did after doing research and determined it was a vitamin deficiency, they fortified grain and oats and flour. Until this day, we still put vitamins in bread. And so Wonder Bread came about. Now, obviously with COVID-19, we realized it wasn't caused by vitamin deficiency. So it didn't require Wonder Bread. What it required was a wonderful vaccine. In order to do that, you have to realize that we're all impacted by by vaccines. We're all impacted by this pandemic. None of us have a perfect health profile, right? Some of us have inherited conditions. Some of us have a lack of access to clinical resources. Some of us had bad habits. Some of our environments, whether it's at home or work or less than ideal. And of course, the socioeconomic stressors have impacted our health. And during this pandemic, more people have presented to healthcare systems, not just for symptoms related to COVID-19, but just symptoms in general. Because the reality is that 15% of Americans find themselves worse off a year into this pandemic. So the point is that we're a community. This has affected us, whether you have contracted COVID-19, whether you know someone who has, whether your other healthcare issues have been affected, whether you have been affected economically. And because of this, this message pertains to you. So you must put your name on the assignment. So I have a pop quiz, like they would have in the classroom, right? More people in the US during the 60s and 70s died from house fires, war, car accidents, or unintentional drownings. I'll give you a few seconds to make your decision. Okay, can we see the poll results? You're correct, car accidents. So during the 60s and 70s, 1,000 people per week died from car accidents. That's more than the number of people who died during Vietnam. And the reason I'm sharing this with you, right, is because airbags were patented in 1952. Yet they were not mandated until 1998. And so what's the correlation to COVID-19? Is that technology makes this for years before it's actually employed or deployed for use. And so when it comes to messenger RNA, it was discovered in 1961. By 2003, we were using it for cancer therapy. In 2010, Moderna realized this could be used for vaccines. And then during the height of this pandemic, they recognized this would be a great vehicle in order to create vaccinations and vaccine and make it available more readily. Now, it's not only do you need technology, you also need revenue. In order to have revenue to support the development of vaccine, you have to have a policy window. Meaning that you recognize that there's a problem and then you have political will on both sides. And then the public also wanted, you know, a vaccine. So all of the circles aligned. And because of this, there was a lot of revenue put into the development of vaccine. So we've been making vaccine for years, trying to readily share the genetic information regarding the coronavirus. We put a lot of capital because of the policy window and a political will and a public will. The technology for messenger RNA existed for multiple decades. We had a willing pool of volunteers who recognized that, hey, I want to participate in this study because it's important. So I want everyone to recognize this is not a fly-by-night study, but there was actually a lot of work and the stars aligned for us to be able to get to the point of having vaccines that are available. So in determining what's best for you, what we know is that the vaccines are highly effective at preventing COVID-19. They're over 90% effective. The safest way to reach herd immunity is for people to get vaccinated. Yes, we can reach herd immunity without vaccination, but numerous people would get ill and will have just, you know, deaths that are unnecessarily occurring, preventable deaths. Additionally, if you choose not to get vaccinated and you contract COVID-19, there's the possibility that while replicating within your body, the vaccine may mutate. And if mutations occur, it's going to take a while before we're actually able to move forward and get back to normal. No vaccine is 100%, right? There's no drug that's 100%. There is no camacea. But even individuals who contract COVID-19 after being fully vaccinated, typically they're asymptomatic, they're not hospitalized, and there haven't been any deaths. There are serious side effects that we have determined occur with the Yancen vaccine. However, they are extremely rare, less than one in a million. There have only been six cases out of nearly seven million vaccines that have been administered. And I think it's important to recognize that what the CDC and federal health agencies have done in order to take a pause on J and J was the right decision because it allowed for healthcare professionals to be able to determine and recognize the symptoms and how to best and appropriately treat individuals who come in with symptoms suggestive of this rare clotting condition. Also, it helps to be able to better define who should get the J and J vaccine. Now, in removing and washing our hands of the misinformation, it's important to realize the vaccines do not give you COVID-19. Right? So wearing the Michael Jackson glove does not turn you into Michael Jackson. Similarly, if you take the vaccine, which gives you the messenger RNA, which is a recipe to code for the spike protein, the spike protein is an indicator similar to the Michael Jackson glove. So as an indicator, it's on the surface of the virus. So you can see all these red protrusions are actually spike proteins. And when your immune system sees the indicator, it knows it should attack. But you're not actually getting the virus itself. Vaccines do not affect fertility. So as mentioned, the mRNA codes for the spike protein. And so the spike protein has been alleged in rumor to mimic the fertility protein, particularly the protein that's found in the placenta, which supports babies in utero, where there is some resemblance. However, they are not the same. And I can't stress enough that your immune system is capable of distinguishing trillions of pathogens in your lifetime, trillions, right? The same way we are able to distinguish people from one another. So we can distinguish Elvis from an Elvis impersonator. And in the course of the studies, the clinical trials, women got pregnant who were vaccinated. So we know for a fact that the vaccines do not affect fertility and the spike protein does not mimic the placenta protein. Nor do the vaccines contain latex, microchips, or dangerous components. The government wanted to ensure that almost everyone could get vaccinated. So it was meant to be hypoallergenic. Now, I can talk to you until I'm blue in the face. And some of you may choose not to get vaccinated. And so there's a Haitian proverb saying, you can't wake a man who is pretending to sleep. And sometimes as a child, I would try to get out of chores. So my grandfather would tell me, don't find yourself running from a fox to a bear. So in this instance, don't find yourself running away from the vaccine and actually contracting COVID-19. So my last quiz question. We did a population survey and we asked people, what made you get vaccinated today? So what do you think was the most popular choice? I don't want to get sick from COVID-19. I want life to get back to normal. I want to protect my loved ones and family. I want to travel or my job required it. Make your selection. Now I'm going to move on for a second and come back to the answer. So why did I choose this illustration? I chose the illustration of a child with no face because I think many of us live behind the shadows. You know, we only see a person, but we really don't know the person. I don't know your motivations. I don't know your inhibitions. I don't know the barriers you're facing. So whether you're facing barriers trying to get access to the vaccine or if there's barriers within that are preventing you from wanting to get vaccinated. I chose this illustration because it actually is my kindergarten, first day of school photo. So while I looked pristine in my uniform, most people didn't know that I lived in a dilapidated house without heating, without a refrigerator and a stove. And lunch and recess were so important and essential to me growing up. It gave me the opportunity to have a hot meal and to be able to get out and play in a safe environment, which I didn't have in my neighborhood. So I want you to think of lunch as the vaccine and recess as the opportunity to return to normal and not be isolated, to boost our economy, to bring back tourism to the state, to be able to connect with family and loved ones and to just be. So the answer, the number one answer to that question when we did the survey, people said they wanted to protect their loved ones and family. So can we show what our audience thought? And you agree. So similarly, I got vaccinated because of my mother and my mayor. My mom has always worked in healthcare, but she's not a nurse or a doctor. She actually dropped out of nursing school when she got pregnant with me in order to provide. But she has been skeptical about getting vaccinated and it took a lot of effort. She didn't think the healthcare system really cared about her, but she recognized that she was vulnerable because she was an essential healthcare worker. She's part of the healthcare workforce. And so she did get vaccinated. My mom wanted to be a nurse because my mayor had worked in hospitals for all her adult life. She started out as a groundskeeper. She went to be in a janitor. She worked in the laundry room. She made it to dietary and she was so happy when she ended her career working in the physician's lounge as the head cashier. And so she would take me to her awards banquet and she was so happy to be part of this health infrastructure and the stability of being employed. And she was able to become a homeowner during that time period. But unfortunately, during the height of the pandemic, she succumbed waiting for a vaccine. And being vaccinated was very important to her because as a child, she had been orphaned. And being black Catholic and an orphan, she wasn't considered deemed worthy of vaccination. And she contracted the diarrhea at the age of 12 and nearly died. And so she was so grateful for the healthcare system that saved her. And she received every vaccine. She got her flu shot every year. So I know we all have our own motivations. For me, it was to honor my mayor and all those who are not, who did not have the opportunity to be vaccinated. I don't know what your motivation is. I don't know what your inhibitions are. But I hope you consider the impact that your life has and recognize that you are worthy of vaccination, regardless of race, political affiliation, country of origin, or the language that you speak. And being an adult is hard, but it requires us to make grown-up decisions. And in doing so, I hope that you recognize that we should return to normal. In order to do that, it takes a communal effort. And I want to see you on the yard. I want to see you vaccinated. So if you have not been vaccinated, please call the COVID-19 vaccine hotline at 1-855-453-0774. It will help you find a vaccine provider or if you need help or assistance and schedule an appointment. Thank you.
Dr. McGee, we have about 100 people watching and I know all of us were moved by your personal story and your message to the people of the state of Louisiana. And we certainly hope that it was impactful and that they will take your personal story and your professional guidance to heart. And thank you very much for that presentation. Before we get started with Dr. Dunham, we have another poll, very brief poll, and Dr. Dunham is asked that we get to those poll questions. So if we could put the poll questions up now and they're going to ask you some demographic questions about the poll. And the first question is, what industry do you work in? Education, behavioral health, criminal justice, hospitality, or tourism, arts, media, entertainment, oil, gas, and energy, civil servants or public officials? And then there's another button. If you don't, if you don't fit that, any of those categories. So please take your time and submit the poll and we'll go to the next question. You can see question two. Do you know someone who suffers from a mental illness or substance abuse disorder? Number three, have treatments or supports been more accessible, inaccessible during the pandemic year? Have you lost a friend or relative to a drug overdose during the pandemic year is question number four. Have you or anyone you know attempted to or completed suicide over this pandemic year? Our final question, question six, please respond to the most appropriate description for you regarding receiving behavioral health, mental, or substance abuse, or more than one. And you can fill out any of those three choices. We're going to give you just a second to complete the poll. And now we're going to turn this over to Dr. Rochelle Head Dunham. Dr. Dunham, I know you were as moved as we are by the presentation of your friend, Dr. McGee. And we're looking forward to your guidance to come as it relates to mental, emotional health and stability and the stress we've all felt during the pandemic. Dr. Dunham.
So good afternoon and what a great presentation and what a great segue into the conversation of mental health, emotional health, the impact of your psychological well-being as influenced by COVID. I want to go into my slides with the first slide about epidemics and pandemics. They in and of themselves can create enduring fear and erratic behavior in many cases. But the effects on mental illness really can result in one of three outcomes. They either cause destabilization or worsening of an existing mental illness or they can precipitate new onset mental illness. And we've seen quite a bit of this, particularly in children and adults. And it may or may not be related to the impact or the interplay between one's immunity and one's mental health baseline. And then the other thing that it can do is cause significant distress in caretakers or loved ones or individuals who are affected by the effects of mental illness on the people they care about. So if we look a little bit deeper into our psychiatric world of diagnostic possibilities, all psychiatric conditions can be problematic to a person's ability to exercise good judgment. At the end of the day, it is your judgment that psychiatric conditions ultimately affect. And even if treated, we can still have difficulties when we have external stressors like a pandemic occurring where everybody's resiliency is being challenged. But we typically categorize psychiatric illness into four groupings, mood disorders, psychotic disorders, anxiety disorders, and personality disorders. Examples of how a pandemic can cause destabilization for mood disorder is in the manifestation of impairment in motivation and memory or in engagement and socialization, more withdrawn behavior. For psychotic disorders, we can see more fear and paranoia or even delusional thinking of feelings about things or thoughts about things that are fixed and won't change, even though they're irrational. For anxiety disorders, we see a host of conditions, examples of generalized anxiety disorder, which is free-floating anxiety, worry, or social anxiety, which has to do with performing and getting in front of other people, or phobias. And currently, needle phobias are really problematic for people who have that type of phobia. And much of what we see visually are needles going into arms. And then finally, post-traumatic stress disorder, which is huge, particularly given the history of trauma that is so commonly seen in psychiatric populations and often undiagnosed as the cause for behaviors in the general population. And that can be manifested by increased avoidance, worrying, fear, even re-experiencing things where there are reminders and ruminative thinking, thinking over and over about the same problematic thing, confusion, and for some, worsening of physical symptoms. This is particularly common in our elderly population where a lot of their physical complaints really represent an underlying psychiatric disorder, anxiety, a mood disorder, number one and number two. And then for personality disorders, which we experience but don't always quite understand, they represent one's inability to really manipulate normal defenses. We all have defenses and it's our psychological defensive structure that allows us to exercise good judgment and interact with each other in healthy ways. Personality, an example of a personality disorder is obsessive-compulsive personality. To be distinguished from OCD, the personality disorder is the perfectionistic rigid type person around ideas, thoughts, and behaviors. And obviously, if you have that kind of rigidity naturally as your tone, it's very difficult to maneuver in a pandemic world where everything is different and all of your familiars have to be adjusted. So let me give you just a little bit of a sense of what we're looking like in terms of numbers. Now, this slide is about pre-COVID mental illness and substance use disorders. And the subsequent slide will, will be where we are post-COVID. So prior to COVID disorders, we about two in five individuals had a substance use disorder and they struggled with use of illegal drugs. Alcohol is much higher with 73% of the population or three out of four people struggling with alcohol use. And then for alcohol use and illegal drugs, about one in nine people are 11.5%. Overall, those numbers represent about 7.7% of the population of people 18 years and older. So if we flip to the mental health side, pre-COVID, mental health rates are about one in four, about 25% of the population have a serious mental illness. And that's a mental illness that really requires an intervention for resolution of symptoms. And that's about 20.6% of the population of people over 18. But if we look at people who very often have symptoms of both, we're at about 3.8% of the population who have both a substance use disorder and a mental illness, which makes intervention treatment much more complicated because both of those independently are difficult. Together, they're even more difficult. So in 2019, 61.2 million Americans had a mental illness and/or a substance use disorder and an increase over 2018 by 5.9%. So here's the COVID data for mental illness. During late June, 40% of the United States adults reported struggling with mental health or substance use disorders. And the number one disorder, pandemic disorder, was anxiety and depression 31% of the time. Trauma, stress-related disorders, 26% of the time. Substance use increased 13% of the time and seriously considered suicide 11% of the time. And that suicide issue is a profound issue that I'll talk about a little bit more, particularly for our young people. But all of these increases were more dominated in young adults, racial and ethnic minorities, essential workers, unpaid adult caregivers. Disproportionately worse in terms of mental health outcomes as well, in terms of more substance use and more suicidal ideations. So suicide unfortunately has become an epidemic within the pandemic in that we have such a high rate of increases in suicide with one in four of the young people ages 18 to 24 having suicidal thoughts or have completed a suicide attempt. There are clear risk factors that predispose individuals to suicide, some of which predated COVID, but there are newer ones now that are directly related to the depths of despair as relates to COVID and all the complexities associated with. Unemployment is an example and it increases the risk of suicide by 1.6% alone. But we can't forget about our little children here because they are struggling as well with COVID and all of the changes. I mean, their environment has been completely disrupted with the school scenarios of remote learning, hybrid learning, in-person learning. You hear this day, you're not that day, and all the changes that they are encountering are difficult for them. And so it's important for parents to invite children to talk about how they're feeling. They can communicate about how they're feeling, their sadness, their feelings of hopeless and anxiousness. And frankly, their anger about the change are real. Those are real symptoms for them, and they need to be addressed with them. And talking to them in ways that they can understand becomes very important. Now, younger children may manifest difficulties by being more aggressive developmentally. A potty-trained child may no longer be potty-trained, may be soiling their panties more. Adolescents and young adults may try to hide their struggles because of fear, shame, or a sense of responsibility of not burdening others because they do tend to think that they are the center of the universe. And if I'm having trouble, everybody's having trouble. It's really important to make sure that those communications continue, ramp up, or accelerate with children and young adults. And then because of all of the deaths, we just heard Dr. Eber's moving story of the loss of her grandmother. And I think that probably was a pretty tender touch point for most people listening because so many people have experienced death during this COVID period. Children, adolescents, and families are all experiencing grief and loss. And with that comes an increased risk for mental health challenges and an increased need, in some cases, for special attention or professional counseling. We have to get beyond the stigma of people receiving psychiatric care because it could mean the difference between life and death. I want to switch just briefly to vaccinations because the prior discussion was more about vaccinations for the general public. But specifically for the severely mentally ill, which in this case also includes those with substance use disorders, they are at increased risk of being infected by coronavirus and have higher subsequent rates of hospitalizations, morbidity, and mortality. And there are two reasons for this, big reasons for this. One is they are more likely, substance users are more likely to have cardiopulmonary damage because of just the damage that those toxic substances that are abused have on multiple organ systems. That damage to multiple organ systems results in vulnerability if, in fact, the virus is allowed to enter and you don't have a vaccination to prevent it. And so it's really important that we are aware of the fact that they are much more vulnerable. They are a high-risk population, and when they get the virus, they're more likely to succumb because they also probably have not had pre-COVID healthcare. Much more stigmatized in emergency rooms and in hospital settings. And so they just don't go, not to mention all of the psychiatric issues in their judgment that makes going not a good idea. And so we do have to do extra things, like in our agency Metropolitan, we are particularly sensitive to the fact that our behavioral health-challenged individuals probably won't come unless we do some extra outreach to get them there. And so we have our own vaccination program that really had them in mind in particular in order to make sure they're able to get their vaccinations. They are not very different from people of color in terms of being a priority high-risk population. So to the story of people of color, so disproportionality in our healthcare system is very much aligned with disproportionality in all major systems that impact people of color. I think we have, this has been borne out in a number of different ways, education system, justice system, et cetera. COVID-19 is the indisputable evidence that a history of poor healthcare results in generational risk for higher rates of morbidity and mortality from the virus. But what accompanies this is a lot of emotional discontent. And we're seeing this through protests, we're seeing this through the trial with for Mr. Floyd. We're seeing just a lot of rehashing of trauma and emotional pain. And what that looks like is a lot of anger, a lot of confusion, frustration, depression, anxiety and avoidance, fears of things not changing, which results in hopelessness, as well as paralyzing distrust of the health system. And that paralytic distrust of the health system is a major cause for why people of color question vaccinating and getting vaccinations. Vaccinations will never, ever be at the threat level of getting contracted the coronavirus. And yet, we're having so much trouble convincing people of that. And a lot of it has to do with the emotional complexity of the trauma that has been experienced and what people are experiencing every day as they try to make rational decisions about protecting themselves through vaccinations. I just want to run through just a few quick articles, just to share with you the degree to which emotional trauma or the damage from mental illness is causing in various aspects of care. And so during August 2020, February 20 through February 2021, the percentage of adults with recent symptoms of an anxiety or depressive disorder increased from 36.4% to 41.5%. And this was August to February of this year. Top line is both anxiety and depression. The middle line is just anxiety, and the lower line is depression alone. But in each case, you see an increase, an uptick in those. For maternal depression, it has an anxiety, it has worsened during the pandemic. And this is a meta-analysis that suggests this. In this article, they talk about unmet mental healthcare needs among adults that has resulted in increases since the start of COVID-19 pandemic. And this is one survey study. And then this article talks about a third of COVID-19 survivors receiving a diagnosis of a psychiatric or neurological illness within six months of their infection. This is a really important article because I think one of the things that people have to understand about the virus is that the virus also, not only are we seeing that people having persistent physical symptoms as a result of exposure to the virus, but they're also having new onset psychiatric and neurological illnesses that are persisting for months. And then here we go, fear of needles may impact COVID-19 vaccination effort. Many people have said, listen, I'm afraid of needles. Every time I see a picture or commercial with a needle in it, it makes me even more uncomfortable with the idea of getting a vaccination. That's a mental reason why somebody won't get vaccinated. They may actually feel like it makes sense, but it's an example of the type of destabilization that a person may have around the thought of vaccine and why vaccination sites should also take into consideration some cognitive behavioral coaching for people who may have fears. Want to spend a little bit more time on substance use because we are in a pandemic as it relates to substance use disorder. The CDC, according to the CDC, as of June 2020, 13% of Americans reported starting are increasing substance use as a way of coping with stress or emotions related to COVID. We've seen a spike in overdoses and deaths during this pandemic. And the rates over this past year have been the highest 12-month period ever recorded for overdose deaths. This is what we look like in Louisiana, a fatal overdose comparison by year. For Louisiana, the blue line is synthetic opioid poisoning, fentanyl, for example. The green line is opioid poisoning deaths. And the drug deaths, deaths caused by all drugs, a combination of drugs is the orange line. And so 2018 has always been lower in each case relative to 2019. And in 2020, we actually peaked at 1,769 deaths due to drugs. So we see, we're seeing a tremendous increase in overdose deaths related to drugs, specifically to opioids and also to synthetic ones in particular. So heroin is one type of opioid, but synthetic opioids like fentanyl is one of the major cause for all of the deaths. So what are the drivers for increased drug use and overdose? I mentioned cardiopulmonary effects of most drugs. Most drugs interfere with circulation and interfere with perfusion of the lungs as well as cardiomegaly or inability for the heart to do its job of pumping and circulating oxygenated blood. Another reason is shifts in less potent drug availability. So as prescription medications become less available, people are switching to heroin. Heroin is often laced with fentanyl, which is 50 times more potent and dangerous than heroin. Economic stress, fears, and loneliness often cause increases in substance use because people use it to self-medicate or settle their anxiety, settle their fears, detach, basically. A reduction in resiliency promoting activities like physical activity and social interactions. I mean, hence what's happened with quarantining. Well, in a vulnerable person, a population that needs that as a part of their health and well-being, it's deadly, it's very dangerous. And so they are isolated and at home to the next point, or in an isolated scenario where people aren't around who could resuscitate them or call an ambulance if they look like they were in an overdose status. And enclosures of treatment facilities with reductions in care has tremendously impacted their ability to get the help that they need. So I wanted to share with you some crisis data because we are in crisis mode right now. We have been since March of last year. Our crisis team filled it 4,173 calls, 348 of those per month. September was the peak month of calls for crisis. March was the low month, but we're starting to escalate up again this past February and March. But the main reasons why people are calling in crisis is, number one, they're depressed or have some depressive or mood disorder-type symptomatology, or they're very anxious. Number two, have a traumatic, a post-traumatic syndrome-like category of symptoms. Or it's a substance use-related call, either they're someone who's overdosing, they think someone's overdosing, or the person wants help because their substance use is escalating. And then we have had to convert to virtual care. We have removed ourselves to a significant degree from walk-in services. That has handicapped some people who don't have virtual capability, but it's what we've all had to do in order to keep the doors open and keep services available. And this is just a snapshot of what our service modalities have looked like since March of 2020 to 22, with 21% of our services being in clinic, 24% being via telehealth, but the largest percentage have been via teleaudio. So what do we do about this? One of the things that Metropolitan can offer is mental health first aid. And I strongly encourage circulating this as an option to understand the basic tenets of mental illness and substance use, and more importantly, understanding what can you do as a non-trained person to help somebody, your family, a friend, a coworker, by encouraging them and saying what needs to be said. Because many times we are baffled about what to say. What do I tell somebody who's thinking about hurting themselves? Or what do I tell somebody who is profoundly depressed or is using to the point that they're killing themselves? A mental health first aid training can be very helpful. We offer those for free at our agency. And the number for Metropolitan will show up later if you're interested in getting trained. These are two options that are also available to the general public. We have an ongoing virtual support chat line called hashtag Get Your Mind Right. It's on Fridays at 10:15. You can log into that meeting with people around the country, actually, logging into that call. And then if you're in a crisis or someone you know is in a crisis, our crisis team can be reached at the 568-3130 number as well. And then just generally speaking, in order for you to guard your own mental health, here are a couple of tips. First of all, remember to breathe. The Apple Watches and some of the other watches actually periodically will chime you to breathe. That is intentional and purposeful because breathing is an art. It is not just an automatic thing that we do very well. And subconscious breathing, deep breathing is a very healthy thing while profusing our brains and helping us to think better and to feel more rested overall. The next thing is open up to someone, tell somebody what's going on with you. And don't avoid asking for help. Our pride has to be removed in order for us to improve. And so don't avoid asking for help if you need it. And then balance your, how you spend your time. And also spend your time with people who help you and don't complicate your life more. There are some people you could spend all day talking to, and they can just put you in a tailspin. That really is not worth it. So I suggest avoid those or limit those, spend time with people who help you function better. The other thing is find the answers for your children. They're asking the questions because they need to know, and they do need to know. And also demonstrate for them resiliency because they become who you are, not who you say they should be. Also, I think it's important to hold on to the belief in something bigger than yourself. This is hugely important to me, having a belief in God and knowing that at the end of the day, I can settle things that I don't understand by believing that there is something bigger than me operating here. And then be a blessing to someone else, help somebody. It's one of the best ways to boost your natural endorphins is the reward you get from helping somebody else. It's okay to enjoy an occasional indulgence, eat that piece of cake, you know? Have that piece of candy, don't do it all the time, but do it sometimes because your mind is really going to haunt you until you do it anyway. So you might as well give in every now and then, you enjoy that indulgence periodically. But your basic tone should be to eat well, lots of variety, lots of freshness if you can get it, and move more, and move more, and move more. Sit less, stay sedentary less, and please get enough rest. We as adults, everybody throughout the life cycle should get at least seven to nine hours of sleep a night. If you're getting less than that, you're not maximizing on your brain energy, your brain power, nor your physical energy. And then at the end of the day, if you have to choose any way to think about things, choose joy. Joy is always the better way to feel about life, and we can choose how we think. And so I would suggest that you practice being intentional about what you entertain on a day-to-day basis, and that will be impactful on how you feel on a day-to-day basis. And with that, I will open it up for questions and answers.
Thank you both for being with us. We do have a question for Dr. Dunham as it relates to MHFA and the services. Danita wants to know, is this provided virtually or in person?
It is provided virtually. And we have, we are coordinating that virtual training with the National Council of Behavioral Health. It's their platform, and we have, we purchased that option with them. Now, we do do live training, we do do virtual trainings ourselves, but there's also a two-hour training that they provide as well.
Would you like to review the poll results, Dr. Dunham? Or do we have you come back to do that? Would you like us to reveal those results now so they can be discussed by you and Dr. McGee as well if necessary?
Please do that, thank you.
Let's reveal those poll results. Dr. Dunham.
So we see that the majority of our participants are civil servants, public officials, and behavioral health experts, but also a significant number of other. I'm not sure what the other are, but it's not uncommon that we have a large percentage of people who this conversation is familiar with. It's those other groups that we want to reach, and we want to acknowledge that behavioral health is for everybody. And so we need to continue to reach out to everybody. In terms of suffering from mental illness or substance use disorder, knowing someone, that is actually predictable. It's very unlikely that everybody does not know somebody, most of us. So that's consistent with what I would think. Have treatments or supports been more accessible during the pandemic? This is 50/50. I'm glad to hear that they have not been more inaccessible for some, but for those where they have, we have to fix that. And more detail around that is important for us to have in order for us to make those adjustments. Have you lost a friend or relative to a drug overdose during this pandemic? Well, thank God for the 93% of you who said you haven't because that 7%, the story is very painful, it's a very helpless place to be. Drug use is very difficult to manage in addition to mental illness. Fifth question, have you or anyone you have, anyone you know, attempted or completed a suicide over the pandemic year? That's 16%, that's too high. That's too many lives known that have been lost, and that's work that we have to do. And it is directly related to the hopeless despair that people are feeling. And I think the lack of brother's keeper attitude that we all have in taking care of someone is the reason why that mental health first aid training could be very beneficial for those of you in the audience to take advantage of. And then the last question, please respond to the most appropriate description for you regarding receiving behavioral health, mental, or substance use treatment. And we've got 21% have received. treatment. And we've got twenty-one percent have received services prior to March twenty twenty, twelve percent received services since. And those not receiving services. And the before number being higher than the after is a bit of a concern and I wonder if that's a factor of inaccessibility. What we're seeing is that people are more in need than pre-COVID and so we need to take a look at that more closely.
Thank you very much, Dr. Dunham. No other questions from our panelists or from our participants. We have several chats, all of them with the same theme about how moving and inspirational the information was provided, that was provided. And they hope that many other people have an opportunity to see this virtual town hall and they will, we'll we'll get to that in a minute. I wanted to check back in with Dr. McGee. Dr. McGee, do you have any, any closing comments or anything that you need to to discuss before we wrap up today?
I found Dr. Dunham's presentation to be very compelling, particularly the data. And I do think that it is necessary that we have more of a community approach. Being a brother's keeper, recognizing that many people now live siloed existence, we've become very autonomous in our decision-making, we've moved out of cohesive family units. And I think, you know, there have been, you know, benefits as well as risks during this pandemic. It has, you know, encouraged us to be able to communicate more. And if you stay at home with other individuals, it allows for you to have the capability of being able to have conversations about what's going on in society. And I do think it's important, you know, when it comes to having joy in our lives and being careful about what we you know, subject ourselves to, whether that's through radio, social media. I think there's a lot of information that's out there and sometimes it can be depressing, it can be frustrating. And typically, we process that differently, all of us. And so I think having lines of communication, having someone to talk to, encouraging people to have a brother's keeper approach and and looking to someone beyond yourself, whether that's a higher power, a neighbor, a friend. And ultimately, looking for joy. So if that joy is in receiving mental health therapy or taking a break from the stresses of life, I think we're on the same page with our message. And so I appreciate her her speech and talk and this opportunity.
Thank you, Dr. McGee. Before we wrap up, Dr. Dunham, any closing comments or remarks?
Similarly, I think it's just really important for people to get the right information, make sure you're dealing with correct information. I think what both of us have attempted to do is to present in an unbiased fashion truth. And some people use the the phraseology truth to power. It's a very true statement that if you have truth, you truly do have power to make decisions that ultimately help you and not hurt you. And so I just hope and pray that those who are listening take advantage of this opportunity to hear from both of us, information that is solid and not at all wavering. And and I do wish that we reach the herd immunity as soon as we can and that people then can experience more relief and they can truly have joy.
I could agree with you more.
Two chats during this conversation. One from Jillian says, this town hall series is always so well-done. Thank you, Jillian. And a very simple message from Catherine says, such incredible women. And we agree. Thank you both, both for being here. If you find yourself struggling to cope with COVID nineteen stress and how you can find help or you're simply interested in learning more, please visit conquercovidnineteen.la or text reach out to seven four one, seven four one.